I ditched that one.
Get a form.
The law is more for time. You've got two minutes.
I know, I know. You called me and told me to be on topic.
I just sent you a check. This line is there.
Huh?
This line is there.
Mine.
That's what we said.
I know. I move my feet every time I come.
They do that.
I know. Just want to make sure that can read. Without my glasses. Somebody's gonna make a fortune for a mask that doesn't have a glass.
Yeah, I need to know when they figure out.
So Laura, she can't get contacts. Huh? Can't get contacts.
No, I can't wear contacts.
I could, but I'd still have to have cheater. Just do it for the ball, good.
I can't wear contacts. I have trifocals.
Trifocals? That's three?
Huh?
That's three?
That's three. Now see how blind I am?
Oh, my goodness. What's the most actually for?
It's for aged people. I'm old and proud of it. Consider the alternative. Consider the alternative. And you make my feet go down every time, too. You know, it's not nice to do that.
Well, I did that on purpose. I'm sorry.
And you give me a different one that doesn't come up. God, y'all are making me.
I got it before.
Yes.
There you go.
I think that's a little bit.
I think you need to cut the break on.
I don't care.
There's one over there, no kidding, you flip, but keep it going, too.
Yes, I think that's our.
This is the one with it. And it doesn't work. I know. No, I'm just gonna be short here.
Hydraulics in there.
The hydraulics are broken. This is one that the budget wouldn't take.
Right.
Put it in the budget.
She noticed the awesome.
We could say it was because I haven't gotten the COVID had given me the. Did you see the thing of the best thing about wearing a mask is you wear it at home? Because it keeps you from eating.
Well, I keep, when I'm turning my papers, I keep doing this. It doesn't work.
I don't think you're supposed to live.
It doesn't work.
Well, she didn't get a bunch of checks from twenty-eight, ten, and twenty-nine, ten.
Hey. Can I call you back? Yes, did you get that? I'm like, all of a sudden, just showed up.
I opened the bucket, wait a minute. Where in hell did it?
I know. Oh, you did send me that. Yes, I thought you were just.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock. It's time to start our regular meeting from Mount Pleasant City Commission on Tuesday, July the twenty-first. And I filed meeting order, and if you don't mind, Mike, would you lead us in the pledge? And Mr. Archibald's standing right back here, he's gonna do the prayer for us. Everybody stand, please.
Let's pledge, ladies and.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, unafraid, under God, and individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a bow and then a pray. Dear gracious God, we come to unite, Lord, so that from the West Day, we thank you for our help. We thank you for bringing us here together, Father, discussing this. What we ask is that as this meeting goes forward, to Mount Pleasant, that all things decided here are beneficial to the residents of Mount Pleasant, as well as our community, and all members present. Would you thank the nation, all its thanks, and your son Jesus?
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Miss Blankenship, here. The date is.
Here.
Miss Granbury? Not there. And Mr. White?
Present.
We have a form.
All right. Next, on our agenda, we have the approval and correction of two sets of minutes, one from our study session dated June the eleventh, and one from our regular meeting of June the sixteenth.
Mayor Commissioners, the most recent copy of the date, with a couple of final changes, was what's in front of you tonight.
After everybody's had an opportunity to look it over, I'll entertain a motion.
Just minor changes, the last go around.
Okay. Mayor, I'm like, oh, the motions have been made for June eleventh and June eleventh study session and June the sixteenth meeting.
Have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Please, up the minutes you flip, Mr. Granbury. Would you give a vote, correct it?
Yes.
Yes. Good.
All right, we'll do it. All right, number five, award presentations and appointments, Mount Pleasant Board of Zoning Appeals. That will be Mike Crew, Mike currently serves on that, and the group is asked to be continued.
We'll need a form of motion.
Okay. We'll need each one of these.
Yes.
We have a motion.
I make a motion that we accept Mike Crew as remaining on the planning.
Mount Pleasant. For zoning appeals.
Zoning.
DCA.
Yeah, BGS.
We got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And that thing is working.
It is.
Next, we have Mount Pleasant Planning Commission. We're not gonna make that appointment tonight. We're, we have, Mr. Davis has brought us a great young man. We just talked to him, Kate and I talked to him a few moments ago. He's got a lot of great qualifications, resident of the city of Mount Pleasant. Tori has done some work on this. If we couldn't find somebody that was acceptable, with the background in which we felt like was important to serve on that commission, we could look outside of the community to do that. We wanted to see if we could. And from what I understand, Kate, we've got a couple of other people that may have an interest in it. I plan to talk to Kate does, and then I thought we'd also load it in front of Douglas Marshall, which is chairman of our planning commission, just to make sure kind of everybody's same vote on it. So that one will be deferred until the next meeting. And so with that being said, a motion to defer that, please.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to defer to next one.
Yes. We have, we have a second. Any other comments, questions? Second, opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mount Pleasant Recreation Commission, which is the final one, and that will be with the. We'll get down here in a minute with Bedford residing. We've made, Bedford asked if Mr. Granbury, Mr. Granbury, be added to that commission to service the commission, commission, or only the parks and recreation. That's a mouthful, we got one of these. So with that being said, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the nomination of Mr. Granbury for Recreation Committee, Parks and Recreation, to replace Bedford Smith.
All right, second. We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting? I don't think we got any. All right, monthly report from mayor, we're not gonna have one today. I think we're gonna spend a few minutes afterwards, maybe talking and letting everybody know where we are, where we've been. Number eight is monthly financial budget report from Laura Redd.
Yes. As you know, June is our month end, our year end, fiscal year end. Therefore, we do not have a monthly budget report as such that will come in the form of the audit reports. They will be presented at the December meeting. I did send you some data on some things, the sales reports, and some revenue reports that I should have gotten.
You also got an email yesterday, right?
Yesterday, right.
I got it, it looked, it looked good, frankly. It lied what we're dealing with. Got anything else, Miss Laura? For those of you that hadn't, it may not get as in-depth with some of this stuff. Interesting, ma'am. Think that water?
No, I'm just.
Apparently during this pandemic, people at homework wanted to click a lot. So the sales tax revenue is actually up, believe it or not, and it's proportioning up with the work of Laura Redd and her staff does. We can kind of tell you where it's coming from now, it's just saying it's up. Local sales tax is about flat, maybe down just a little bit. But the biggest majority of our income increase is from online, so keep wanting to click.
And as you notice, the state overall, sales tax was down. Because our portion of the state's sales tax is like a twelve percent decrease, so the fact that we're actually making gains is.
Yeah, the national, they did national, it was way down.
Way down.
Which was to be expected.
Yeah, it was probably.
Did we find out for sure that, I guess, like where I'm at, three, four, zero, one, that's not, is that included? Do we ever find out for sure?
We had found out for sure.
Well, we've been doing a lot of homework on it, we feel like we're doing pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, as far as looking at those that are in the three or four or one, that they are paying taxes into Mount Pleasant, yeah.
Oh, I agree.
It's a constant project now that we are able to get into the website and see who's got their licenses and stuff.
Any other questions? Laura Redd, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the monthly financial budget report.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, monthly report from city mag.
And Mayor, I don't have much to say, I'll chime in and we get the wastewater, but we're doing our best to stay ahead of COVID, which of course you can't do. We do have some positive employees, and we're dealing with that, and disinfecting, following the rules that we need to be following. And we may revert back to phase one and close the lobby again. We're gonna meet on that and figure out the next step on that. So that's why we've kind of changed the rules and required some cage masks and things like that. For, just for my report, that's all.
And it's not just for this meeting?
Oh, no. Tomorrow morning, we of course.
Tomorrow morning, we, we, we say we had on the dock?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, so they're gonna be waiting outside. So I don't, I don't want anybody to get the wrong impression, we're doing this for everybody's health and the community. All right, number 10, special reports from other city departments or committees, wastewater liaisons, bars and design, sewer uptake, and this is gonna be.
Yeah, I showed all of you the pictures on, at the study session, of the work being done at the wastewater treatment plant, so obviously that's awesome that we've got some work going on. And that's funded solely by the Murray County CBG, they pour the walls, and they've done some concrete slap work. Then we get the sewer trunk line project, that's funded by the city CBG and USBA. That bid is due Tuesday afternoon at three o'clock, and so that'll be in front of you in August to award that bid, so you'll start seeing the trunk line project going on. Then the Rainy Street Sewer Improvement, they're wanting to meet with us on Tuesday of next week to kind of tell us where they are on that. They're ninety, ninety percent done with engineering on that. And then the wastewater treatment plant improvements, which is the biggest part of all of this, money-wise and work-wise, we just had our thirty percent design meeting on that, and everything went well there. And we'll have a fifty percent in the next few months, and so we are making, we're spending money and making progress in that area.
And all of that money has already been awarded.
Yes.
Just for everybody's information. We don't, we're not gambling on it, it's here, we got it. At the end of the day, when all this is said and done, you can see, there's always a lot of questions, because this community's fought with this sewer issue since about nineteen eighty-two, and Shangler, twenty-twenty, it's still dealing with it. We are. We're gonna put this thing to bed, and it's gonna give this city an opportunity. The other side of this thing is to, that at the end of the day, it's gonna cut the debt service coverage over the sewage pieces, the whole, three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So that's gonna be a pretty significant number for our community to really think about like that.
Maybe have a capital account.
May, maybe put a little money in the bank in the sewage side. Yeah. Kind of built together for the Mount Pleasant gas system report.
I don't have anything there, just going for a gas.
Good. Do we need them?
No, neither of us need to be, we're not.
I think so. All right, we're getting down to new business, number eleven. Resolution twenty-twenty dash eighteen, resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing payment in lieu of taxes for the Mount Pleasant power system, fiscal year twenty-twenty to the dash twenty-one.
Mayor Commissioners, A, B, and C are all in move taxes we do every July. The first one is Mount Pleasant, where they can't move taxes to us each year. And Laura Redd has the dollar amount, if you need to know that.
If I'd like to know, we did this every year.
I wouldn't mind, because I mean, it is a lot we get from the power system.
Electric system, fire system, three hundred ninety-nine, nine hundred, that's what we have. But of course, we'll, after their audit is completed, then they'll give us updated numbers. Gas is eighty-six thousand five hundred, and again, after our audit, we'll update that number. And the housing authority, it got budgeted seven thousand, but last year it was only about eighty-six hundred dollars.
So any questions about that? We're gonna have to do these individually, but any questions on those three?
Mayor, I make a motion for resolution twenty-twenty dash eighteen for power system.
Okay, we got a motion on twenty-twenty dash eighteen, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now resolution twenty-twenty dash nineteen.
Make a motion, we accept resolution twenty-twenty nineteen, for the in lieu of tax, having in lieu of taxes for the Mount Pleasant gas system.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-twenty dash twenty.
Make a motion that we accept resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty, resolution approval agreement for payment in lieu of taxes for the Mount Pleasant Housing Authority.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, resolution, or D, resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-one, resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement, and related instruments, and determining other matters in connection therewith.
Yes, we need, D is the fire truck that we already have, and we had approved financing through USDA, got thirty-five, five percent grant, so this is the lease agreement. The first payment for the fire truck is not due till this fiscal year, which is why you're seeing it now, even though we've already had the fire truck for a while.
Right.
Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah. Any questions on this, on the fire truck piece? None, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve of resolution twenty-twenty twenty-one for the execution and delivery of the equipment lease purchase. I destroyed the fire truck.
Yes, that is.
Has presented. Just so you know, since you're facing that way, it is somewhat hard to hear you. Do you know that? All right, it's for the lease purchase agreement related instruments and determining other matters in connection where this was on the fire truck. Yes, ma'am.
All right, we have a motion now, we have a second.
Somebody want a second?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. E, which is the fleet cars, I'll entertain a motion on twenty-twenty dash twenty-two.
These are the fleet cars that we already gave us permission to purchase, but they weren't available, we only purchased one, and so we're giving the other remaining three.
Mayor, I would like to know, you didn't quit coming about this, I did ask someone to call about this, about this, you know, that, you know, about new fleet cars or whatever. It was like a toe, toe this person, I mean, we wouldn't want somebody to go out on the call, we want them, we want them to have vehicles that will make the call. We don't want them to be broken, broke down on the side of the road, say, hey, I gotta, you gotta send somebody else out. So I'm thankful, you know, that we do make sure, you know, that we do have the right with.
And we are paying quite a bit of maintenance right now for these last two that you previously. I mean, if it's my home, I wouldn't pay that kind of money to pick a car, and I knew I need a new one.
Because I'm thankful what we're doing. And saying that, Mayor, I'll make a motion for resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-two.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. F, resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-three, resolution revising the employee compensation plan for the city of Mount Pleasant for the fiscal year beginning July the first of twenty-twenty and ending June the thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one.
And Mayor Commissioners, I apologize, you said this in front of you last month, and we made, we added the IT director last month, and with the reorganization of the fire department, it's absorbing codes, we left one position out, which is the administrative captain. And so that filling in has been added to the compensation plan as the administrative captain. And you can see that on the attachment, you should all have, that's been added.
Any questions? None, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-three, revising the employee compensation plan for the city for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty, and ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-one.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. G, resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-four, resolution removing taxes from the real property located at five twenty-one Gans, I'm not going into groups of parties.
Right, and Mayor and Commissioners, I'd like to encourage you.
Yeah, encourage, no, ma'am.
So this is a property that was on the delinquent tax roll for Mount Pleasant, I think in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, but it was also on the Murray County's delinquent tax roll. It sold at the two thousand sixteen Murray County delinquent tax sale for Murray County back taxes for two thousand fourteen. So it's been government-owned since two thousand sixteen, and no taxes has accrued on this property. Murray County has a virus for it, so they've written off their uncollected taxes, and they've asked the city to do the same, so that this property can get back on the tax roll and start collecting money that goes back into the city.
Well, we're gonna do.
It's a very small amount of money.
Yeah, it's a very small amount of money, one side of it, the other side, if we're gonna start collecting taxes on it again.
Hopefully get it in for.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve, resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-four, removing taxes from the real property located at tax, tax map, map, one thirty-three North Group A Parcel, which is addressed five twenty-one Gans.
Now, you know I said five twenty-one Gans.
I know, I realized that afterward. You know, from the time we do it on Thursday, when we discuss it tonight, it's like, okay.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. H, resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-five, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee Board of Commissioners, to accept the resignation of Commissioner Bedford Smith, and declaring a commissioner vacancy on the board of commissioners.
Mayor Commissioners, you baller, where Bedford has resigned in the thirty parts of rent director position, so we have to accept his resignation and afford everything on to the election commission. In November, there'll be three, four-year terms, and one, two-year term.
That two-year will be to serve out the remaining term, with Bedford that left. I appreciate, I know Bedford was out there, but I want to say how much we appreciate what he's done the last couple of years. But I firmly believe, without any question in my mind, that our parks and rent department's getting ready, but Thomas has done a great job towards. Bedford gets it clean, slate clean. Canvas is alcoholic, because he's a painter, and I think it'll be very good for our community. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty-twenty five, by accepting the resignation of Commissioner Bedford Smith, and declaring a commissioner vacancy on the board of commissioners.
We have a. Second, that's what I was saying, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd love to go tell Bedford we did that.
Yeah, really? He's out there. He's probably out there listening to it on.
Yeah, he is, he's standing outside.
A, resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-six, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee Board of Commissioners, Eric Harvey, to build an unexpired commissioner term of Bedford Smith. I've met with Mr. Harvey, Kate and I had lunch with Mr. Harvey, Mr. Harvey's in the audience. You don't mind, Eric, if you get up and just say a word or two, like we talked about Thursday?
Sure. So I'm Eric Harvey. I don't know, I probably know your kids more than I do you. I've taught at the middle school for, this will be my twentieth year. I grew up in Lexington, Alabama, and moved up here about two months after the middle school opened, as a fifth grade social studies teacher, and I've been there ever since. And three years ago, in May of seventeen, my wife and kids and I moved from Larchburg over to Brookside, and we've been there ever since, and we just love Mount Pleasant, and we're just happy to help, and serve where we can.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Harvey? Only commission.
My only question, assuming this vote goes through, is would you like the option of having us, where are you in, at the next meeting, when your family can be here?
They're, they're out in the hallway.
And he doesn't have Alabama on tonight.
I can fix that quick. No.
You're not allowed. How am I disappointed?
You already know.
Now he has keys. I gave him when he was. And I knew he was gonna come to Alabama tonight.
So once we, once we have a vote here, you're ready, go ahead, and if we're in.
She's got the thing. I want to add a personal note, and I told Eric I was gonna do this, and for those of you that are familiar with the gospel singing group around here, it's the Kellys. And Eric is a member of the Kellys, in fact, so I don't, personally, I don't think you can get a better character reference than being part of the Kellys. And that's just who I think they speak to, they're wonderful, so thank you. All right. You're ready? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-six for Eric Harvey to build an unsecured commissioner term of Bedford Smith.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, welcome aboard.
Got a second. We better do a roll call on this, just for, I know what the outcome's gonna be, but Laura Redd, if you don't mind, just, because it is building a vacancy.
Miss Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Miss Granbury?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Motion carries, four, zero.
Thank you very much.
So if you want to step up, Eric, we'll go ahead and have you. You want to get your name like that, bring that on in.
For those of you in the audience who think we go through this rapidly, we have a long study session on the Thursday before, where we discuss all these things in great detail.
That's where y'all show up. Hey.
I'm moving out.
Now, Eric, before you say anything, now, I know the young ones have been here so long, have y'all turned to Tennessee or any other town yet?
Just like that.
Man, I can't believe that.
Get rid of it.
Yeah.
These two, they're housed by.
I need to, a license plate that says that.
We're having one, I already have one.
At least they don't play each other every, what, seven years or whatever.
I thank you, ma'am.
I, Eric Harvey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Tennessee.
The state of Tennessee.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the laws and the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the performance of my duty.
And the performance of my duty.
As commissioner for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
As the commissioner of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So have me God.
So have me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Eric, you can take a seat right there at the end of the.
There you go.
I have some handles.
We'll get your paperwork afterwards.
I have to warn you, I push people off the end there, too.
I don't know how much. Is this my permanent seat?
Yeah.
So you're surrounded, aren't you? That's what it is. Yeah, I don't know.
What was your county, I mean, Alabama?
Yeah, okay.
No, we won't. Now we won't.
Make sure your wife attends the meeting.
Yeah.
We don't let any employees vote, so.
J, Resolution 2020 dash 27, A Resolution Requesting The Murray County Election Commission To Conduct An Election Within The Corporate Boundaries Of The City Of Mount Pleasant Tennessee On Tuesday, November the 3rd of 2020, To Elect Four Commissioners Pursuant To The Election Laws Of The State Of Tennessee.
And Mayor Commissioners, this kind of reiterates just what I had already stated, we have to pass this resolution to make sure the election is set up correctly for November and Todd Vexer has reviewed this resolution and said it's worded the way it needs to be worded, so we just need to get it sent to him signed.
All right, any questions on that? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept Resolution 2020 dash 27, To Accept Requesting The Murray County Election Commission To Conduct An Election Within Our Corporate Boundaries Of Mount Pleasant On Tuesday, November the 3rd, To Elect Four Commissioners Pursuant To The Election Laws Of The State Of Tennessee.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, I don't see that this needs a roll call to you, Corey. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. General comments from the citizens, we have five signed up. I want to remind everyone here that you're limited to three minutes, please, as always, and this is limited to the residents of the City Of Mount Pleasant Tennessee. First, we have Ms. Kim McKinnon. Would you come forward, please?
Yes, ma'am.
And would you come forward if you don't mind, please, again, I've already given your name, but give me your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Kim McKinnon, I live at 101 Locust Street, been a resident here all my, all my life. And the reason I'm here tonight is I have a concern, Sunday evening I was, had a phone call from my neighbor asking me to go check on my dog that lived next door to her. So I went over there because I had, went over there before to give the dog water, and so I got my water, went over there, and a bone robed and the dog was dead. So she has proceeded to tell me that the police had already been there at nine o'clock that morning, it was 12 o'clock then, and I said, okay, and I said, why did they get called, and she said the dog didn't have any water, and I said, okay. And I said, well, let me borrow your phone, I'm gonna call the police back and have them come over here because the dog's passed away. So the police come over there and it was Josh Kroger and Riddle, I'm not real familiar with him, Officer Riddle, or the new cop, the new cop? What is his last?
During the day, is it probably Dicky, Brian Dicky?
No, it wasn't Dicky.
Johnny Cambya?
No. I know Johnny, it was during the day, whoever Josh, whoever Josh worked with.
He worked with Brian Dicky.
Okay, well anyway, they come over there and he said, we've come over here at nine o'clock earlier because we've got a phone call saying that the dog needed water, and I said, okay, and he said, we knocked on the door, no one was at home, and my neighbor said, I think the owners are in the hospital, she said, because they were supposed to be having a baby. And he said, oh, okay, and he said, well, they weren't at home, I thought I would come back three hours later to check on the dog. And I said, did you give the dog any water? And he was like, no, I didn't give the water, the dog any water, I was like, okay. So he went and he called the landlord, I don't know who the landlord was, called the landlord and said, yes, the owners were in the hospital, and then he called his boss, he said, which was Jack Bergit, to ask what to do with the deceased dog, and Jack said, leave it there. And I'm like, you can't leave the dog, 95 degrees weather, so he was like, yeah, we'll get 100 calls, we can't do that. And I said, well, I just want to make it clear, you didn't give the dog water, and he was like, no, I just assumed the owners would have come out. What I'm asking today is that if the city would please just enforce the state law that for animal care, provide shelter, water, that's the bare minimum, and it's not being done.
We're absolutely looking into pre-charges.
Yes, and if the officer is not comfortable with it, you know, call Animal Control, they will send out a crew of investigators to investigate that. There's also like Pet House, they will come out and assist, but that dog definitely sent away. And I mean, the owners most definitely dropped the ball, but so did the officers. They could have provided water, that's the least they could have done. And to say I'm coming back three hours later, 95 degree weather at 106, you know, I mean, that's just crazy. And so, like I said, just call somebody.
I can assure you that Kate has made me aware of this. And the city is going to pursue this with District Attorney, to the limits of the law.
Yeah, I was later told that the owners actually had already had, had that dog taken away from them for the very same reason. But I also would like to know, will the officers in Mount Pleasant receive training, education? Because for Assistant Chief to say, leave a dog in 95 degree weather, it's definitely not right. And then for the, I mean, his, and then for Kroger to say, I didn't give it water, that's what you were called here for, there was no, there's not an excuse that he didn't provide the dog with water, no excuse.
Am I gonna sit here and try to make one?
Yeah.
But you don't know if the dog was dead at that time or when it...
At nine o'clock when he got there, the dog wasn't dead. But when I went back at 12, he was dead. And like I said, I can't say for sure that the dog died of heat stroke, the odds are he did, but I do know for sure that he should have been provided water. The officer should have for sure provided water, and at 95 degrees, it shouldn't have been, I'll come back in three hours, it should have been, I'll come back 15 minutes, or I'm gonna stay here and call somebody. So.
We are, as Katie said, we're looking into this.
Okay.
That I can promise you, we'll have, there's, I'm also gonna say, there's some privacy laws, Corey, that we're gonna have to watch for, and what we say and do, this point for, but I can assure you that we're gonna, we are already in touch with the District Attorney's Office.
Okay, but also, again, will the officers receive training?
As of right this minute, it's our intent, I think.
And I don't know exactly what they can do on private property.
That's the problem, we'll get Corey, our attorney, to get involved in it because I don't know what, what we can do legally about going onto private property.
Normally, we cannot.
Just protocol in general, you, you don't have a protocol in place to handle this?
You can't get on private property.
You can't get on private property.
So if I call the police and I say you can't come on my property, they can't step on my property and it can, doesn't it get me sued?
A crime.
A crime.
Is there some... So that's not a state law that the dog was...
No.
That's not a state law, that's a good dog, and you have no water in 95 degree weather?
Not supposed to get on private property.
Unless they get a warrant to go on your property. You know when you see all those things on television about the neglected animals and that? They have warrants to go on property for that.
Yeah.
They can't do that right there.
We don't have the money to fund an animal patrol cell, nor does the City of Columbia, I tell you, everybody relies on the county now.
Yeah, and I understand they're spread thin, I definitely understand that, but, I mean, it broke my heart, I'm a huge, I'm a huge animal lover, you know, like, it broke my heart. I mean, I went several times just myself and gave the dog water, people would call me because they knew I worked from home, and they were like, damn, the dog didn't have the water. So, you know, and like I said, it, it's just a very sad situation and something's gotta be done.
We, we are, we are addressing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, so you know that speech that you heard from what it's almost three minutes?
Okay, thank you. I thought I knew you'd have heard something.
Yeah, Mr. Carroll has left, he's on the list, so you know he's...
Okay. Ms. Gordon, I'm sorry, I don't think 1720 Ricketts Mill Road is in the city.
It's not, but this is a topic that has to do with the city, if you don't want to address it here, I'm happy to take it to Justin Wilson and Andy Cordan.
That'll be, that'll be fine. All right, you said Carroll has left?
Yes.
Next, we have Melanie Gray.
It's Gary.
I didn't see the caller.
Happens all the time. I'm Melanie Gary, I live at 528 Brookside Drive, I've lived here for only two years, I'm a new resident. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, as you are aware, I have contacted all or most of you regarding my flooding issues which occurred Sunday, July 12. This was in fact, the straw that broke the camel's back. I purchased my home brand new in August of 2018 as it was a new construction house, again at 528 Brookside Drive in Sugar Creek Development. It was built by Mark Tosh and the developers are Ray and Mike Floyd. This might ring a bell, Sugar Creek is contaminated and is on the TDEC site listed as a super minus site. It has been destroyed by runoff from local industries here in Mount Pleasant. This flooding issue is the responsibility of the City Of Mount Pleasant. The subdivision was approved by Mount Pleasant City in 1993. The Mockingbird residents have a water stream, Sugar Creek, running in their backyard. The subdivision was approved without retention, pool upon, my question is why? This is an engineering issue that must be handled by the City Of Mount Pleasant along with the city building code director or director of the codes and settings. But I do understand that Jim Bailey, the former mayor, did approve this site. So how, was the subdivision built without proper drainage, retention ponds, et cetera? What did the city think was going to happen? It just, every time it rains, it's blowing me away. My property and the property of my neighbors close in proximity has been flooding every time there's a steady rain, it does not matter the inches, it does not matter how much, if it runs on the road, it's going to flood. A steady rain will make the ditch behind my property overflow so fast and so hard, I have white caps in the yard sometimes. My entire backyard and entire front yard will flood, including my crawl space and two to four inch feet into my garage. The crawl space was built with a barrier around it to stop from water from getting into it, this has never worked. When it floods, there's six to eight inches of sandy, contaminated, muddy water submerging my entire property, making my home look like an island, and you will see if you have seen the video. I lived through Hurricane Katrina, my property is along the Mississippi Gulf Coast did not have the water that I have every time it rains hard here in Mount Pleasant, and that is the truth. Mr. Robert Archibald, the City Planning and Building Director emailed today and stated... Thank you.
I, Ms. Gary, I'm gonna make a statement at the end of this, but I wanted everyone to be able to speak on first, just to tell you what we are doing. I'm gonna give you some answers, okay?
Okay.
But see, here we have Ms. Wendy E. Shaw that's on 103 West Cooper.
Eskey, I think.
Eskey?
Eskey, yeah.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what we're doing.
Okay.
If you don't mind, your name and your address, please, ma'am.
I'm Wendy Eskey, I live at 103 West Cooper Street, we've lived in Mount Pleasant for 11 years, we've lived in our home now for almost six, we never flooding issue, sometimes it would kind of get up through the back of our house. February of this year, we had about three feet of water in our basement, our finished basement, we lost probably $4,000 worth of stuff in our finished basement. And then Sunday morning, it was 10 times worse, we had the downpour, we woke up to check on everything, water rushed in, tore our door open, three locks on the door, and water tore it open. That was, it tore up our sewer pipe, our plumbing pipe, knocked my dryer from one corner to the other. Luckily Miller's Plumbing was really sympathetic to us and paid us well, I mean, did a good job for us for less than money, but luckily Deputy Odom come out to check on us and then turned the Red Cross, did put us up in a hotel for a couple days, because we had no toilet, we had no shower, nothing. I have a 16-year-old daughter who has intense anxiety every time it rains because we had flooded twice in five months. And I just want to know what is going on, what has changed, because it's not flooded for five years, and then two times in five months, I just want to know what's wrong. And my father come to check on us Sunday morning, he was kind of driving around and he seemed like some of the storm drains just had a trickle coming out of them. And we wonder why some has a trickle and we have a pond or a lake on our side, we got like four feet of water in our basement, Sunday morning. So it's just, we just want to know what has changed and what we can do or what can be done to fix that so that doesn't happen again. We love our house, we don't want to move, we love where we live, but, I mean, we can't do this every few months.
Same as I just told Ms. Gary, I've got, I'm not gonna tell you there are all the answers yet with the city's head, I'm sorry, Kate and I came by Friday, I tried to go and I went to your house on Friday myself to look and see what damage has been done and it was devastating.
It was.
I'm not gonna tell you any story. As Hollis was sitting next door, we actually got to speak with her and the young man that owns the house of...
Tim Carnes from...
Was there as well.
Yes.
And so I don't want anybody in this audience to think that we're just disregarding it because we went out personally and viewed.
Yes, Tim told us that you came.
It's like they've already kind of rebuilt that retaining wall.
Well, water seems to come over the retaining wall.
Yeah, that retaining wall was built for reasons, it must have flooded years and years ago.
I mean, I guess though, we never had a flood until February of 2020, we moved in, like I said, it'd be six years ago next month. So we were, we were hoping it was one of the like time thing and then...
It wasn't.
No.
Thank you, and I'm gonna speak to this pretty quick, and we've got Corey here, I'd like for her to say a few words at the end, if you don't mind, but just, she is, ma'am, take you a seat so you can hear this, please.
Yeah, people have left.
They're, they're gone.
Yeah, if you could come on in, take a seat. Hey Johnny?
What has happened in February and what happened here to, or Sunday and the half of it, is devastating, I'm not gonna tell you any story. Kate and I viewed it Friday, I've seen your video, don't believe it. I just want everybody to remember one thing, that that is an act of God. And I'm sorry, I don't find that funny.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's talk. For what, I'm sorry. It's devastating what happened here, I'm not gonna tell you any story. Kate and I looked and I'm gonna just tell you what we've done as of right now. I'm gonna speak to West Cooper, Locust first, and then I'm gonna come over to Brookside and Boston Beach. We've done a lot of research on what's going on with Cooper. I have lived here my entire lifetime, and I never knew that that string went under the line of that. I found out something, and I have lived here my whole life and have played up and down every street on this, and I never knew it was that.
That was funny, Jackie.
That was pretty good. Here's what we do know, we have been in contact with TDEC, we have been in touch with FEMA to see what, number one, FEMA could help us with, and Kate had reached out to them just to see if there is any public money that's available through the federal government for the help of this flooding, because it was an emergency, it truly was. So, we do know this, and I'm not gonna sugarcoat anything, I'm gonna tell you like it is, I'd rather you know, that is what is classified by TDEC as a blue line string, which means that the City Of Mount Pleasant has zero authority. Now, I'm gonna tell you what, what else we're gonna do to try to help. We have also been in contact with MTS, which is a division of the State of Tennessee which helps communities of our size with legal questions, with questions regarding flooding, questions, and what they have offered to us, and we are going to accept it without question. A gentleman by the name of Mr. John Clarkson with MTS is a public works engineer, and he is going to come to our town and he is going to view every piece of drainage and everything we have and give us a write-up, of which we will be provided. to tell us what we can and cannot do legally. Because the good and the bad is, is if we're gonna do this, the other side of it is, is if the city of Mount Pleasant moves any piece of dirt, literally a shovel full of dirt, we just became responsible for all of that water. Because did it divert it down to the next person? Did it divert it down to three more people? But what we are going to do is, we're going to have MTS come with their engineer and they're gonna view this for us and they're gonna at least give us some answers to what's our next step, what can we do next. We're in this weekend. I want y'all to know that. I'm gonna speak to public-private funding here just at the end of this, but I just want you to know that we're not just sitting back watching this happen anymore. We're gonna take a proactive stance and the city of Mount Pleasant is gonna do everything within our power and legally can do to try to help. But our hands are somewhat tied, please understand that. But the first step is getting an engineer in here and figuring out where all this water is coming from and where it's going. Gotta start somewhere, okay? Any questions?
When is the engineer gonna come do it?
That's not scheduled yet, but we've reached out to him and he asked for all the addresses. Somebody provided all that to him.
Yes.
Know about a camera? You could stick in these drains and figure out what's in it.
I think that's probably gonna be part of this.
Okay.
Because he's, from what I understood, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I read what he's gonna do is they view all of this runoff and where it's coming from, correct?
That's why we wanted each address.
That's why we wanted the addresses.
Yeah. Who cleans that out? I don't know the answer to that question, but--
There's a problem.
But we're gonna, we're gonna get some answers. We're not just going, "Oh, well, it flooded."
Bill, can I ask you to clarify something that, because you did for us before, by a blue string--
Yes.
We can't touch it? I mean, we don't have jurisdiction over it all. We can say, "It appears to be that," but we can't do it, as he said. It's a, is it a state or--
You have to have TDEC's permit.
Yeah, we have to have a permit from the state or federal to do anything with it. So that, he'll be looking at that too, to see.
And clearly, up and down on that blue line string, people have built on it, people have defences on it, people have concreted it. There's so much that has been done that caused parts of problems here.
Is that state property? Does the city got that state above?
Yeah, we're meeting with them.
We're meeting with them. That's our, that's--
I don't know, I don't know the property issue, but I do know that they call it a blue line string, which creates, you can't touch it without a permit.
So same, the line is the same?
Yes.
Can't cross it? Brookside Mockingbird.
Do you want any video?
Yeah.
Or Rodney?
Well, Rodney's doing it. It's getting it up for us. Again, MTS is bringing the engineer out there and I appreciate your email.
Will you let me, let everybody know when he's coming?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought you'd be at home when--
Yes, ma'am, because he's asked for it. He wants to know. You ever heard about throwing somebody under the bus? Well, I fixed to do. I think Kate and I have been over there and there is a detention pond behind the middle school, or what used to be the detention pond behind the middle school, the drain. And what has happened is, I don't know if it's got silted up to where it got all the way up to the bottom of the tip or if it, what it was put in and designed, but you can see right here, that is supposed to be a detention pond and not a-- Well--
These pictures are from the February rain, not the August rain, but we get an idea of where the water's coming. And keep in mind, too, that the city of Mount Pleasant cannot permit the county building, so they have no permits. They never went front of the planning commission. They just built it.
Understand, on the, on the piece of county property that there is located, the school, the city of Mount Pleasant has zero authority, correct, Cory?
Yes.
Zero.
Well, the idea of the detention pond is that it's, when you have a heavy rain like you've had, is it completely fills up and then if it gets to the top of the detention pond, you have a pipe taking water away from it. And any of you can drive by the back of the middle school and you'll see that there is a detention pond with the pipe at the very bottom. So the second it starts raining, that pipe is running constantly. It's supposed to be up here. It's supposed to, it's supposed to collect the water. It should never run. And you'll, we'll show you pictures. It runs between two houses on Mockingbird. You can, you can, you probably have all seen exactly where it goes because you can see the grass down. It's going immediately from the middle school right into that neighborhood. It picks up and meets--
See where it's going?
And it meets behind this Gary's house. It meets the State of Tennessee Highway 43. So you have two, you have two ditches of water that run together and it just blew up behind your house. But you've got, there's a ditch along 43 as well that gets, touches behind there. So you've got some of that aerial over, like Mockingbird to--
Yeah, right there, that's a, that's a good shot of it right there. See how it's just pushing that water? So, what have we done with that? We've reached out to Murray County.
We've actually had the building official out here at the middle school who agrees with our assessment of the problem. We've had the engineer, he wants to build out the remainder of Brookside. It's very concerned about drainage issues as well at the site. So just started those meetings and, you know, something has to happen at the middle school. And then I know that there's all kinds of drainage things proposed for the new homes in there, other detention ponds and stuff, but if you don't ever fix what's going on at the middle school, we're gonna continue to have a problem here.
So, not sitting on our laurels. I want you to understand that. We don't have all the answers you're gonna want yes to, no. But you're gonna have us on your side and we are going to be doing everything we can legally to make sure we're doing all we can to help. I'll ask one more time if you've got any other questions.
Cory can talk there?
Yeah, and I'd like Cory to. And then I'm gonna have one last thing I'd like to say on that. Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I contacted Sonia Pinker and she sent me an insurance form. I have it filled out. What, what does and what would that cover?
That's gonna be between you and a private entity--
Public entity.
Sorry, they just changed their name. They were PMLs, but--
Yeah, now it's public entity partner.
Exactly what, how they insure.
I've heard that they normally don't do anything.
And then, and you'll, when Cory speaks, may, may make more sense, but it's been their response.
I wanted you to know what the city was going to be doing to try to help the problem and not just keep kicking the can down the road because we've been guilty of that for a lot of years around here and it gets flat and there's nowhere else to kick. And that's the point in where y'all find yourselves at.
One more question. When will the developer from California be here?
I think it's scheduled to try to be on the planning commission meeting next month.
He, they asked to have it moved this past week, so I don't know that they are, have asked to be on the August meeting yet. Now, one of them lives in California, one of them lives here in this little house on Hampshire Drive. So there's two couples that are owners of that project.
Be watching the play, Cory.
Anything that's gonna be on the planning commission has to be in there.
My head's full. Cory, if you wouldn't mind, please?
Okay, the commission has asked me just to kind of address some of the legal issues around stormwater and drainage in the city. So they've outlined their plan going forward, but there's a couple of things I just wanted the public to understand or to just start talking about. So the first thing is, the federal government has something called the Clean Water Act and Tennessee has their equivalent. It's called the Tennessee Water Quality Control Act. And that, those two acts together, what they do is they regulate water, just in general, like you can't pollute water. They have what's called the MS4 permit that is applied for and mandatory for big cities to have. And that's a permit that, that regulates what kind of stormwater, like sediment and, you know, dirt and things like that that goes into your water. Those only apply to big cities. City of Mount Pleasant is not anywhere close to the size that it would need to be to be regulated by MS4 permit. So because of that, we don't have one. That MS4 program is something that a lot of cities use to start having like a drainage program. But again, because we're not big enough to have that, we don't have those federal or state requirements to manage stormwater. It would be completely cost prohibitive for the city of Mount Pleasant to do that, but we're not under that program. So any obligations to manage stormwater like bigger cities have, we don't have that. The next thing is some cities do what's called a stormwater utility. And that operates the same way that like the sewer utilities does or the sanitation. And it is an ordinance that would go through the city and they would basically set up a program, a utility system, have somebody run it, and they would collect a tax that goes directly to stormwater and drainage management. There are some cities that have those that have been, they have to collect a lot of money. They maybe get the government program so then they have to sustain it with taxes. The city of Mount Pleasant also does not have that. We don't have a stormwater utility. That's certainly something that the commission could look into if the commission, if the citizens wanted it, but that would be a overall system for the community that would be funded by taxes. So right now, we don't have that. That doesn't exist.
You'd actually have a water bill, a silver bill, a gas bill, and a stormwater bill.
Yes.
Would be added to your bill.
And what that takes, you know, because you're collecting funding for it, it takes responsibility for putting in the systems and making sure it works and maintaining it properly. Again, that just hasn't happened here. It can, you know, they can put that in if that's what the citizens want, but it hasn't happened. The other way that the city gets liability for a problem is if it owns or manages or controls property. So it's like, if the property here that this building is standing on, if we did something out that and it caused a change in the flow of water, the city would have responsibility for the damage that was caused from that, from the city's actions on its property. From what we can tell, from the information that we have, and I've done a lot of research on this, these flooding issues that are coming up are not caused by problems that, or any contribution actually made by the city. But it doesn't own or control the properties that are causing these flooding issues. So that's where the city liability comes in. And the other, the truth of that is, if the city didn't, doesn't have a stormwater utility, doesn't have an MS4 obligation, doesn't own or control property, the city actually cannot use public funding to fix big traffic problems. That's not allowed. And so that's where a lot of this conversation with the legal world is revolving around is, what contribution does the city of Mount Pleasant make to any of these problems? Because if we don't find one, we actually are prohibited from taking any action or using any city money to fix a problem. That's why right now we are trying to reach out and find the people who could help to see if we can help facilitate that and serve as a liaison instead of, the city just went out there and tried to fix problems. It possibly used money inappropriately and is now responsible for any change in the course of water. So Tennessee has what's called a natural flow rule. Sorry, this mask is hard to talk in. But you, what it means, if water flows, it has a natural course. And if you disrupt that, you can be responsible for what happens going forward. So those are just some general, you know, just some general information that I have about stormwater and drainage. Like the mayor said, we are having an engineer who is an independent person that works for the state to come out and evaluate these things. But if he, he maybe tells me that that's wrong and the city will go from there. But this is just the information that we have right now, so. That's not addressing any particular ones, but in general, that's how stormwater and drainage is handled in cities.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you noticed or not, that the New Mexican Restaurant on the corner, you put in a parking lot behind this building and that used to be a field. But he made our problems worse. We don't have no currents on our street. I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying that gave us more water coming down that field, comes across the road, comes through my yard like a river. And he made it worse. And I was told that he went by tow, but then I was told that he did everything the city was gonna do. But I had him call on that, that they put his parking lot. He put black paper down and gravel on top of that. Runs off like a river.
And I know that we have gone out and talked to them. They don't have a parking lot. They don't have agents that provide a parking lot. Yes, I did, sir. They know that they have to pay that, but we have to get the engineers. And they've told us that that's what they're gonna do, that they know that we're watching that. I know, I've talked to them personally.
We get water from four parking lots on Cooper Street.
Get Dairy Gem, Mexican Restaurant.
Yep, all parked together. Those in that field like a river.
Kind of the church parking lot, too, can roll down.
Main Street or?
No, the church behind the, where Ben Kitzel's property was.
Oh.
That church right there, back there, goes there.
Folks, I know we're not telling you anything you won't know, but I just want you to know we're doing so. And it's time. It's, like I said, there have been many things in this community that there's-- this, this particular commission has had to address over the last four years and it's not been working because of the cameras keep taking over. And I'm telling you, we don't have all your answers. I'm being real straight. We've got to do it now. But we're working with it. Doing all we can do. Cory says there's some issues about public-private funding. We've got to make sure that we clearly do. But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can to help. If you've got any questions, don't be direct with us. I'll be happy to answer them because Kate and I talked about it. I'm staying. And I do want everybody to know I did personally--